And is this being recorded?
It's being recorded right now, yes.
Okay, fantastic. So, the first thing was, the question about just distance learning. And in terms of distance learning, we had, we basically started right from the very first day. From the, we were able to get together on the sixteenth, sort of plan out what the, what the strategy was. Number one thing was to make sure that everybody had a Google Classroom homeroom, and that they were utilizing Google Classroom for most of our fifth through eighth grade teachers. That was not a, that wasn't, but for our primary teachers, that was, that was a little different. So, we had to, we had to get that up and running. Just to give you guys some perspective, I think we're one of the only schools that actually has some sort of e-learning going as robust as we do, with, or ninety-three percent of our students checking in multiple times per week. And overall, we've had maybe less than twenty students that haven't checked in at all. So, we're working on making that, making that happen, so that we get a hundred percent of our students checking in. We've, on that first day, we started distributing out Chromebooks. So, over the weekend, on the Friday, when they announced the schools were going to be closed, we asked parents to let us know if they needed Chromebooks. About sixty parents took advantage of that, and we've distributed over sixty Chromebooks since then, and we're still distributing Chromebooks as people need them. Um, so, and also, in terms of reaching out to everybody, teachers and administrators have contacted, or personally instructed each parent in the cluster or autism classroom, because that's where we see the biggest need of parents who are not technologically savvy and need a lot of support. So, we've been doing that. Terms of food service, this is where, like, I, my hat's off to everyone in terms of this situation. All over the country, people are, are, you know, learning how to deal with this new reality. But our food service personnel have been magnificent. Christina and Shannon and Ms. Cat, they've been, they've been great. They're serving about three hundred meals a day, because we average about fifty kids every single day for lunch and breakfast. So, for every student that shows up, they give them six meals. So, we actually have a rotation, so that different students come in at different times during the week. In terms of our challenges, it's just making sure that they're healthy. That's my biggest concern, because although we try to limit interactions with the public, what's going on is, we're putting this stuff out on, on the picnic tables, and parents are coming in, so we want to make sure that we, that we spaced that out a little bit better. That's our biggest, that's our biggest worry, because again, the, the, we are trying to minimize contact as much as possible. Okay, am I in the wrong thing here?
No, is this yours? I, I just went ahead and shared this, started to share this, because I couldn't see yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, my mistake. Yeah, go right ahead. So...
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you, can everybody see this? I'm gonna see if I can get this.
Were you guys able to see mine at all, or no?
No, we're just, now, when Amy opened it up.
Okay, great. So, let's, let's move on. I'm sorry. Um, so, yeah, let's head there. So, we went through, we went through those. Let's go to the next slide. Again, three hundred meals per day, about fifty kids per, per day are showing up. We're trying to put that on in a rotation. We also have a link, so that way we know when they're coming and who's expected. Let's go to the next one.
Hey, hey, Principal Toledo.
Yes, sir.
Um, the kids that are bused to school, are they, how are, are they also coming? Do you know?
The problem that we have with the students that are bused is that they go to their neighborhood schools. So, we have, the same way that anybody who shows up, so if there's a student, even if they don't go to Thorpe, we'll still feed them. So, they're going to their neighborhood schools, but we have not received any reports on how many students are eating that are bused to school.
Um, Robert, I've gotten feedback from parents that have been going to other schools. That's all they do, is they ask them what school they go to, and they've all been fed.
For a second, I was, oh, can you hear me? Do you have me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was struggling here, you know. Anyway, I'm back.
Well, since I tend to mute people when you're not speaking, so if you need to speak, you can unmute your, unmute yourself, but I'm muting people to keep the background noise down. So, that's why, so I, I will, I can unmute people as they need to speak, but I just sort of muted them during the principal's report, so then we can do questions at the end of the principal's report. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does make sense.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're on the next.
First back.
Yeah.
We're on the screen now, which is about special education services.
Yeah.
Um, so with regard to special education services, we have things set up, so that the related service providers have already created a Google Classroom. Um, and my, my instructions to them were, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to physically do anything with the children, obviously, but if we can use Google Meet, we would be able to actually talk to each other on, where you could actually even provide some services to students. CPS has not gotten there yet, so where CPS is at, CPS is basically saying, they're gonna give us more guidance, but they haven't done that yet. So, I'm assuming that the platform will be, will be shared with us, but, but we're not there yet. So, but we're ready to go. So, all we're doing is waiting for CPS to tell us it's okay. Couple of other things that are kind of important, in terms of end-of-year testing, all end-of-year tests are canceled, including IAR and NWEA. What that means for selective enrollment, we don't know yet. So, they're working on trying to figure that out. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Um, let's see, did I, could we go up a couple? I want to make sure they got everything. One more? Yeah, okay, yeah. So, let's, so, in terms of, I can go into details as to how we're doing what we're doing, but I think those were the questions that everybody asked. But I can sort of, I can sort of tell you, this is, this is the way that we've, that we've worked through this. There's a Thorpe COVID-19 action plan that's been on our website, and for that first week, I tried to communicate with parents basically on a week, on a daily basis. And now, I'm basically looking at, going back to a, by, you know, twice a week. Twice a week is where, where we are right now. But that COVID-19 action plan actually is on our website, and you have all the different updates that we have for, I've been updating it basically on a, on a daily basis. It's the number one resource for parents regarding our school. The other thing that we're trying to do is, we're trying to make sure, the way that we know that we've reached over ninety, over ninety percent of our kids is because we've had them do attendance in Google Classroom, and that's helped us quite a bit. A lot of teachers are like, this is, you know, there were some hiccups with it. There still are some hiccups with it, where the forums have, it says, you know, you've already submitted this forum, and we're working through some of those things. But it's really important for us to keep abreast of where the kids are at, because I'm looking at it as a public, as a public safety issue. Just making sure that we, that we're keeping track of where the kids are, and if they need anything. We've actually had some students, we've had over seventy-five kids sign up for the counselor's corner, right, Ms. Goldstein?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember exactly how many, but it's been a combination of, like, us adding people. I know Ms. Grace added, like, most of her caseload, and then also students requesting to be in it. So, yeah, we have a good number of students in there.
So, that was, that was a big concern for us, to provide not only support in terms of academics, but also to provide that counseling support, especially during this difficult time for kids, and for their parents, right? Because it's, it's, my guess is that it's a little stressful in some homes right now. Um, so, the other thing that we're doing is, based on the communication committee, remember that we talked about needing one, one platform that we could use? We were looking at Moodle as that platform, and using Google Classroom integrated with Moodle. So, if, if the, if the teachers already know how to use Google Classroom, uh, the guardians, the parents would get, they would get, they would get reports every single week, or on a daily basis, as to how the kids are completing their work. So, now, we have, we have something like, I, I want to say about sixty percent of our parents are on Google Classroom right now, with, and our goal is that by the end of this, it'll be a hundred percent. So, that way, there's one place where they can see all of the assignments for their students, so they're not going to multiple, multiple places. It still is multiple classrooms, because the kids have different groups. But for the parent, there's gonna be a summary of everything every single day, or every single week, depending on what the parent chooses. Okay, let's go to the next one. So, that was our preparation, to make sure that we were ready to go right from, from the get-go. In terms of our logistics, we met with the teachers on the sixteenth. We got everything set up pretty quickly. The administrator is our looking at attendance, lunch, and callbacks. So, we're trying to make sure that we're, that we're calling parents back as soon as possible, to make sure that, that those connections are, are established. We've ensured that all the teachers are in Google Classroom, and they are. And we, and I just mentioned the SEL supports with our counselor's corner. And again, our related service providers for our DL students are, are ready to go. We're just waiting for guidance from CPS, so we're just hold, we're just waiting for them. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, in terms of our curriculum delivery and teaching, we use Google Classroom, as you guys are aware, and we are doing face-to-face meetings. One of the things that we discovered very quickly in this process is that this is not school, right? The same thing that I said to the parents, don't expect that your kids are gonna be working for seven hours a day in your, in your, in your home. That's not gonna happen. And that's also not gonna happen with this distance learning initiative. Our goal right now is to have the kids check in with their teachers at least once per week, well, preferably twice a week, in terms of just the face-to-face contact. But we're working through that. Like, I know that Ms. Stacker tried with a whole big group, and the kids had a lot of fun, and then we quickly realized that a big group is not the way to go with this. So, now, I think we're, we're really focusing on, on groups of five to no more than, no more than ten. But the teacher's gonna answer that a little bit more than me. Do you guys want to mention a little bit about what?
Toledo, it's Michelle. Can I, can I ask a question on that?
Hmm?
Um, so, I just want, and I don't know if this is the right time, but just because you're talking about it, I just wanted to get some clarification on, like, um, doing, like, I was told to not do some counseling stuff if I was the only adult present, you know, because there can be, like, some shady area with that in the setting. But then, like, aren't the teachers meeting just with their students? So, I just, I just wanted, like, some clarification on that.
So, one of the things that, in, in terms of how we're doing that, so let's talk to the, let's talk to the teachers first, and that way they can fill us in on how it's going for them.
Okay. Um, I, whenever I have a session, I ask either Ms. Lamonti or Ms. Barons to come in with me. And my only really issue, and I kind of have the classes a little bit mixed when I'm meeting with them, because I'm not necessarily giving, giving all the kids the same work and all the, so like, my block one and block two, some kids in block one and block two have the same assignment as each other, but some other kids in block two, one and two, have a different assignment. I don't know if you're following that, because I differentiate, same concept, but, so, they're mixed. So, I've asked them to be in. My only issue is my algebra class, and Ms. Lamonti said she would go in with me, so that's what I'm doing. Now, yours is a little bit more sensitive, because yours might be, you know, more confidential and whatever, but that's how I'm handling it, because I'm an erotic.
And it's seventy cents.
No, it definitely makes sense. Like, I, I actually, like, totally agreed when we were having this talk, but then I just thought about it again, and I was like, wait, I thought that the teachers are doing this with their students, so I just got confused and just wanted some clarification, but that's then.
So, I think Ms. Stacker was gonna speak as well.
Um, yeah, so, like Mr. Toledo said, I did try it with the group of thirty-two. Um, I think about twenty-five actually joined in, and it was definitely a learning experience for me, something I won't do again. Um, they were just, I think, more excited to just see each other and talk to each other. So, I, I tried it again, just on Wednesday, and, and I did five at a time, and it worked really, really well. I set up some ground rules. Um, they were really excited just to, like, you know, see me and have a conversation with each other. We talked about the, the packet that I gave them beforehand, if they had any issues with it, any of the new posted assignments that I had. So, we had a really great discussion about, you know, where to go, where we're going from here. Um, and I think they, I mean, they, they're like, can we do this every day? And I'm like, I don't know. Let's, let's aim for at least once or twice a week. But they were just really excited that, you know, we were attempting this. And I know the parents were just, I'm still communicating with them on ClassDojo, and I must have gotten, like, eleven to fifteen comments thanking me for trying it and getting the kids to meet with me. So, it's been positive.
So, in terms of district guidelines, as we now can see why they're so hesitant for allowing teleconferencing, it's one of the things that they, that they've mentioned. And one of the, one of the best practices as we're developing is that we should not have meetings individually. I'm gonna move my computer, I'm about to lose power. Um, so, sorry if you guys walk around my basement. So, anyway, so, um, what we've, what we've tried to do is, we've tried to have multiple students in there with the teachers and, and with, with set office hours. But we are, you know, again, it's a learning process. But I do think, I do think that this is gonna totally change the way that we do things. Just because the, like, we're using this, one of the things that I've talked to the teachers about is, yes, it's a huge challenge, and it's very different, but it's also a fantastic opportunity to develop skills. And, and these guys have been absolutely, I mean, absolutely wonderful in terms of, that learning curve has been steep, but they've done a great job so far. With regards to grading, I want to talk a little bit about that. So, is this sort of messed up at the very beginning, because they came out and said, you can't grade students? The next day, they said, no, 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 you can grade students, but you can't adversely affect them because of, because of their access to technology. So, if they don't do the work, you can't hurt them, and we're, in other words, you can't fail them. But, but if they do do the work, they should be given credit. And those are the guidelines that we've been following. So, we are continuing to grade students, especially, and one of the things that we're trying to figure out right now is that some teachers are saying things like, I'm gonna grade everything when we get back, and that's gonna be really, really difficult. So, we need to sort of figure out what those, like, a uniform way of doing this. That's our, I think that's gonna be our next hurdle. Um, okay, let's move on.
First of all, is everybody, does everybody see the, the slides pretty prominently? Can you read those and see those pretty well? Yes? Everybody just nod?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, go ahead, Ms. Toledo.
So, um, the other thing is, for, for us, what's really important as well, in the same way that we're doing, we're trying to have face time with our kids, because this is such an isolating time, we're trying to do the same thing with our, with our teachers. So, the very first week, we met basically on a daily basis with our, with our team leads. After that, we've been doing it twice, twice per week this week, and once per week with the team, with, with the grade level teams. And the team leads are meeting with their groups, or with their teachers, on a more consistent basis. I would say that they're either meeting daily or every other day, which is, which is actually very good. The only, like, I'm, I'm actually, in terms of meetings, I think I'm meeting more now than I was when we were actually in school, which is kind of crazy. But everybody knows that, you know, where people are, and so they're sending out a lot of, a lot of, a lot of meeting invites, and I'm also sending out a lot of these meeting invites. So, it's, and so it's been pretty, it's been pretty constant. Um, the other thing that I'm doing that's a little different is that we have our administrators actually reaching out to parents and saying, hey, this is how you do this. So, that's also been very helpful in terms of getting everybody on, because we're aiming for a hundred percent. Uh, we've had so many stories that have been absolutely wonderful. In terms of just, for example, some of our DL students, um, you know, that have been very reluctant in the class, have been so happy to see their teacher, and they're actually working. The only problem that we have right now is, they're working when they see their teacher, they're not working when they don't see their teacher, so that can be kind of a, kind of a problem. Uh, so, we still have some challenges. We're still trying to make sure that we, that we're checking in with students at least twice per week, and we're gonna continue doing our faculty check-ins, but overall, it's been pretty positive. So, yeah, that's, I think that's it. And then the next ones are just the whole pioneering aspect of this. Pretty awesome. I mean, our teachers have been absolutely great with it. And you, we know that this, this, again, this is a challenge nationwide, and we're still seeing our way through it, but it is going to change schooling all over. Like, I, I really do think it's gonna be a net benefit eventually. It definitely will be for us. Like, there's stuff that we can implement in the classroom, like, right now, so. So, but we just have wonderful people, and that's what I'm really, really thankful for, both family and families and staff. They've been magnificent. All right, that's about it.
I think that if anybody has questions, you can unmute yourself. If you have questions, I know, let's see, Elena, did you have questions that you wanted to?
Yeah, um, I, sorry, I, I had everything up, and then it got taken away. But basically, we did have, you know, just some families that were concerned, because as much as the Google Chats, which I actually thought were gonna be great, um, I'm assuming CPS across the board is saying no right now to that. Is that correct, Mr. Toledo?
So, see, we haven't done anything that CPS hasn't, hasn't permitted us to do. They do not want, tomorrow, there's gonna be more guidance on
Oh, good.
the, the whole e-learning and how they're, how we're supposed to be delivering content. What we've done has actually worked out pretty well. So, one of the things that I would hate for them to do is to say, hey, sorry, whatever you're doing, you gotta stop. So, what we have right now going throughout the system is you have some, some schools that have run with this, and they're doing great, and other schools that are completely lost, and there is no e-learning platform going on, because they don't have the technology, and they also didn't prepare for it. The only reason why this is working is because we had a few days to just...
Yeah. I, I mean, though, the video, I actually thought that, that video would be maybe a little bit more, like, just to use my own daughter as an example, I thought that that would be helpful. But it's, I think, to kind of express what a lot of people in the diverse learner groups are saying is, that it's not enough of a tactile style of teaching. But I can't express enough how amazing, because doing other video conferencing with some other groups and hearing from other parents, Thorpe is above and beyond what everybody else is doing. So, it's, it's exciting to see how much Thorpe has done and, and how involved the kids are. The only thing is, is that I, I worry down the road when we talk about the extent of how far we're gonna go, because, I mean, I'm just gonna be honest, I don't see our kids going back to school this year, and, and that's, and I'm okay with that, but I want to make sure that we plan appropriately for the kids, so that we don't come back eventually to school in a situation where they're in a really bad regressed situation. Um, so, I'm just wondering, is there a plan in place that we can start planning for that would be more of a modified experience for the kids?
So, I don't know. Like, right now, you know, we, we don't know. We, there's, um, I've asked specifically about, so I'm hopeful that, that we will go back to school this year. Um, April twenty-one is the deadline. I'm almost certain we are not gonna come back to school April twenty-first. Uh, that's basically what the, what the, what the district is. Um, you know, it's, it's hitting at. They had a meeting today, and they said it is, it's unlikely that we'll hit that April twenty-first deadline. But, um, but I'm hoping that they don't close the school year out, just because of, just because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do with this, right? With this, we, we, society can't stop. Uh, so I'm assuming that there's going to be certain things that are, that are gonna be put in place. I asked specifically for, about rolling closures, right? So, if we have to deal with, with, you know, ups and downs with regards to infection rates and things like that, is there a way that we can set up for rolling closures? I haven't gotten any, any feedback on that yet. Um, I'm, you know, as long as we're in the, in the social distancing phase, we're not gonna have people coming over to homes, or, or kids coming over to school. Um, but you know that I would be, you know, completely up for that type of stuff, because if we had smaller groups, it would make sense to me. But again, that's, that's completely out of our, completely out of our hands, so we're trying to be as efficient as possible.
For specific, though, with, specifically with the diverse learner groups, there were already materials that were being made inside the classrooms, and it dawned on me the other day, having the conversation with Mrs. Lang, they can't even get into the classrooms. So, looking ahead, is it possible to get those styles of materials? And I, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Autism Helper uses them, like, with Velcro, those types of curriculums, where there's more of a tactile experience where the kids, and it's probably more so for the younger ones, but I don't know if these materials can be passed out to our, our students in mail or something?
I think so. I mean, I, I think we'd have to, we'd have to actually, like, think through this a little bit more. Uh, but, but it's a completely different, like, the needs of the students in our cluster program are completely different than everybody else's, but it's also something that I think that we can be creative about.
Okay.
So, let's just say a maybe right now.
Okay.
But the, the person that we will probably have to talk to a little bit more will be with Ms. Davis. Um, and I think that that's, that's probably the route that we would go. Um, so, we'll try. We'll see. We'll see what we can do.
Okay. I completely understand. I, I'm hesitant to bring it up, because I, I know there's so much on everybody's plates, but, you know, I, I do want to try to talk about, you know, the possibility of what we need to be thinking about if this is gonna be long-term, longer than what we think we think.
Right. No, that's been on our minds. In fact, that's one of the things that our teachers are, it's slowly dawning on people that this isn't school. So, we have to think of it, like, we're gonna have to look for more long-term projects, more long-term types of, of activities, and, and really changing the way that we typically do things from a daily, from a daily perspective to a, right now, probably a weekly perspective, and that's in terms of general, general education. And then also, how do we make sure that, like, if kids are at home, it, you guys are, you guys have to have things that you can say, okay, parents, this is what you can do with your kids, or here are some outdoor activities, or here are some other stuff that we can do, because I don't want them in front of the computer for three hours or four hours a day. You know, that, that's, that's not good for them either. Um, so those are all struggles that we, that we are, that we're working through right now. Teachers, you have anything else to add on that?
Can unmute yourselves as needed.
Okay. Sounds like no.
Um, I, I just want to say how impressed I am that we have over ninety percent check-in of the students, um, you know, multiple times a week. I think that that is just incredibly important to these kids. Even, even if that's all any of them are doing, they at least feel like they're being, that it's important enough for them to be connected, and important enough for them to be counted um, in some way. And so, I'm just, I'm really glad that that is something that is happening, to the extent that it's happening.
No, no, they've been, they've been really great, and you guys have been incredibly patient with us, because I know that that attendance form has been a real pain. So, we're trying to figure out a way to, to make it so that it's not that. Um, and we're, we're probably gonna roll something else out next week. If it's working for the teacher, we're not messing with it. But if it's not working for them, there's a way to do it with a question. Um, and we're probably going to be moving in that direction, to just make it a little bit easier for you guys and for, and for the students to just check in on their own.
I think the biggest struggle is that students have gotten a lot of mixed messages about what is supposed to be counted and what isn't supposed to be counted in terms of grading, and you've already talked about that, and the fact that we're still seeking guidance on that. But if there can be, whenever there is any kind of, like, specifics about that, I think it would help students to have some sort of external motivation to stay on track, because sometimes it's, unless they feel like they have that, they're not necessarily going to, their motivation for some things is not gonna be high.
Yeah. What we're seeing right now, okay, so first week, it was awesome. Everybody was like, this is great, we love it. Second week, they're like, this is school, this isn't that great. You know, so that's sort of, that's sort of what I'm seeing. Um, so we have to be a little bit more creative in terms of what our engagement is for these guys. Like, why would they want to check in, right? So some of the things that were, that I I saw Ms. Becker doing like a little online poll every single day where kids can sort of respond to each other. I think that's a really great idea. Uh, incorporating little mini projects like, um, uh, you know, one of the things that people are doing are putting things in their window, right? So that when people are walking around, they can count and stuff like that, that would be something that would be pretty cool if we can get kids to, to sort of take pictures of what they're doing, share with. So what we want to do is we want to build the social component first because if we build the social component, then kids will want to sort of check in on purpose, just to see what other kids are doing. Uh, and then also know that there's the learning component as well, uh, that we want to, that we want to incorporate. So it's, um, it's, it's one of those things that we're just going to have to like work through. Um, but, but it's, it's definitely going to be a challenge.
And, Mr. Toledo, everyone, I, it's Michelle again. I think that we're seeing that on the counselor's corner as well. Like, we post like social emotional stuff, like me and Ms. Grace and Ms. Jordan and Ms. Buddha. And a bunch of people are posting like, you know, send three people that blah, 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 or this. And the first few days, it was like, we got tons of responses, like, it was great. And now it's like, I feel like it's only the adult, like us, that are posting stuff. So, yeah, we're all going to have to kind of think how to revamp because they're, they're losing excitement over this.
We're going to have to recalibrate, right? Because if you were doing distance learning as an adult, right? You're doing it for a specific reason. I gotta get, I gotta get these classes done so I can do this, right? So I think we have to start looking at it from a kid's perspective. Why do I need to get this done, right? Because we had one kid who's like, wait, you can't fail me? I'm gone, I'm out of here, right? So the only thing that's going to bring that kid back is something that is, that people are doing in an online community that they can't do or that they want to be part of. Um, and that is going to be a hard challenge for us. We sort of have to figure out what that's going to be, whether that's Thorpe TV or or, you know, different, like, different things like, uh, all the memes that people, that people are putting out there, which are hilarious because that's, the human condition is to ma- is to, is to, you know, make light of whatever's going on, right? So they're, they're, they're coming up with some pretty funny memes and pretty funny videos and all those types of things. I want to sort of leverage some of that stuff with our kids too, because this is history for them, right? So what are some of the things that they're going to be doing that will sort of, you know, tie into, into, and and some of it's going to be silly. But it's okay, they're kids. That's, they're, they're supposed to be silly.
I, I reached out to a friend of mine who used to work for the, um, Chicago, um, virtual school. I, that's pretty much non-existent anymore, but that at, at one point, it was pretty, um, uh, it, it had some really great things going for it and she loved it at the time that it was very functional. Um, and they, I mean, they did, they were in class one day a week, but the rest of the time, they were all, it was all distance learning. It was, the whole thing was from home. So I reached out to her to sort of get any thoughts that she had about what makes it successful or what, what helps it to work, just to.
Was one of our parents.
The what?
The former principal of, uh, CBS.
Uh-huh.
One of our parents.
Oh, okay.
Well, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to her yet. Um, I've been checking in and seeing if the kids are logging in and all that stuff. Um, but, uh, but definitely going to pick her brain because she was there for, for two or three years as the principal when I think it was doing very, very well. So.
So I think it is. Oh, okay. I I know who you're talking about. Yes, she was there when it was doing very well. Yeah, okay.
So I will definitely be picking her brain for, for some ideas on this.
Um, one other question that I have is if, um, if there are needs about, from parents and kids that you're hearing about, I've, I've seen these Google Docs going around for like mutual aid, um, in helping people out if they're, if they don't have groceries, if they don't have, um, something that they need. And I've wondered about starting something like that just for the Thorpe community, like just a mutual aid form that just is for the Thorpe community.
So I'm, um, uh, we talked about that, actually. I talked to Ms. Dean about it a little bit, just in terms of coming up with something because I really do see this as an opportunity for service, uh, because what's going to be happening is, um, again, it's how you look at things. We look at, we look at this as a very big, big challenge, but it's also going to be a, a, a point in the time of our lives where we're actually going to be able to do things for others. Um, and I'm thinking that it probably makes more sense to go through PTA for something like that, um, with our, with our help, right? Because there are five, two, three, and we don't have to, um, like, like, we can actually have them post a lot of those things. I'm not sure if, as the school, I, um, I, I need to do that or I, I, not that I need to do that, I would love to do it. But I think we'd have less, less problems if we went through, through PTA and actually said, here's the PTA link where you can check and see, you know, if you need something, and we can put that on the website for sure. Um, and then have them sort of come up with that. And so if you guys don't mind, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Ms. Penkrott and see if we can get something set up with, also with Thorpe.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, uh, there were some other questions that I had there on the agenda just about sort of LSC things, which we don't really have the answers for. We don't have the answers yet about the timing for elections and when they're going to do that. I think they are still waiting to figure out if the school's going to come back into session by the end of the school year. So all of these things about meeting budgets, all of this stuff, we just really haven't gotten that much guidance on. Um, I think they do, they are encouraging people to meet virtually whenever possible and to have those meetings be open whenever possible. Um, obviously, uh, we're going to have to work through some kinks to make that something that we can actually continue to do. Um, but I know that the C I, the C I W P committee is continuing to meet and continuing to work on the C I W P. They had breakout sessions on Monday and there's going to be another group of breakout sessions this coming Monday using Google Hangouts. And so, and that C I W P, for those who will be watching this later on, stands for Continuous Improvement Work Plan. And it's the plan that Thorpe has to put in place every two years and update it every two years that identifies the priorities that, uh, Thorpe works on, um, just to kind of keep improving, as it says, Continuous Improvement Work Plan. And so, um, that, that committee has been working and meeting all of its deadlines. It's so kind of painful to see that so many things are going to be up in the air in terms of deadlines and everything when this committee has worked so hard to be within deadline and meet all of its requirements. But they've been doing lots of great work in that, that committee and it, it, it's continuing to go on. And I think if the schools do open or even if they don't, there are some plans in place for trying to present these ideas to the Thorpe, um, community before the, the plan gets officially voted on.
Yep. And I think once we get this, once we get this thing figured out, I think we'll be better, you know, because we, um, because then we can actually, like, if we do it, this is what I was saying, that, that in terms of how this will make us better as a school, I can definitely see this platform being something that we can utilize, uh, you know, in, even when we get back to normal. You know, so that people can come in and and sort of participate via, via some sort of teleconferencing and hopefully get more people in what we're doing.
Well, this whole thing is one big PBL.
Absolutely, yeah.
It makes me curious about, not, not that the teachers don't already have enough to do, but, all right, kids, how can we create distance learning? Figure it out. Um, so does anybody have any more questions? Feel free to unmute yourself. Um, if you would like to offer anything else or have any more questions, you can also ask questions in chat. Um, if you don't, I think that we're going to go ahead and move to adjourn, um, shortly here. So let me know if you have any other questions or any other comments.
I, I don't have a question. Um, I just wanted to do a quick shout out for Ms. Hanauer. She has been amazing, doing daily math class for the fifth graders, video. She figured it out. She's toggling between Zoom and Google Hangouts. And I peek over Cyrus's shoulder from time to time and, like, she has her whiteboard, like, she's presenting a course to them. And then, um, they then have like free time. So that's like the social component. But I, I feel like she's been truly amazing, so.
Yeah, she's really run with this. Uh, I mean, all teachers have, but she's really run with this. I did want to mention as well that even though we're, we're, you know, we're technically out, there are some things that are going to be happening. Ms. McNally is coming back on the thirty-first officially, but she's been meeting, uh, since we started, uh, but officially, she comes back on the thirty-first. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. K will, will be going back to fifth grade, uh, and that's going to be happening uh, uh, again on the thirty-first and they've sort of like worked that out already. Um, so that should be, because I let the, I did let the parents know that I would let them know before that happened, but I didn't want to, um, I didn't want to, uh, overstep because Ms. McNally, be, be, since both teachers have been so incredibly flexible, I didn't want to do something that they did not want to do. Um, so they came back and said that that would probably be the best plan for everyone. And I'm very appreciative to Ms. Aquino, uh, to Ms., to Ms. Knutson, to, um, uh, to Ms., Ms. McNally. I mean, there's a lot of, it's a lot of change this year, obviously, you know? And and this is just one more thing, but they've been, they've been tremendously, uh, flexible and helpful. Um, and, yeah, so I'm looking forward to seeing, to seeing her back with the fifth graders. Uh, and I'm looking forward to having Ms. McNally back with the eighth graders.
Great. Um, I'm going to be, uh, I'm sorry to kind of be keeping on track from this, but, um, I'm going to be, this, I've been recording it, so I, I can upload this onto the Thorpe YouTube page, is that right?
If you send it to me, I'll put it up on the YouTube.
Okay, great, great. Um, so then, and then I'll, we, if you could send out an email letting people know in broad strokes what happened and and, uh, that, that, that it's available on YouTube, that would be awesome. All right, anybody have anything else?
Yes, I want to thank all the teachers, um, about the work that they are doing. Sophie is very excited. She doesn't, she doesn't want to do anything until she had the break. And, uh, she's doing very well, you know? Thank you.
Yeah, for some, some kids are really, really resonating with this. Like, some kids, for some kids, this is like, this is great. Other kids need sort of a more social connection to kind of keep it going, but it's, it's really interesting to see the possibilities.
Yeah, I mean, I think the number one thing here during this time is to just make sure that kids do something that they're really interested in, right? Like, finding that project that they, that they can, because they're not going to have, like, having this type of time is very rare. So if they really love, you know, figuring out stuff about ants, well, let's go and look at the ants. Like, let's go see what's going on. Like, like, having them find their passion project that they can use this time to research is critical. Uh, but it's just, again, it's, i- i- it's something that, that we want to, that we want to encourage. And that's one of the things that we'll be talking about as a faculty, to sort of help stimulate those independent, independent projects. Because, uh, I do think that this time can be, can be used in a completely different way than, than, than what we thought when we first started.
Okay, um, I guess we have to vote to adjourn. Um, so I'm going to unmute everybody. Unmute all, all participants are. You're supposed to be unmuted and yet it shows that you're, are you muting yourselves?
They're saying yes, thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay, so, uh, somebody, Robert, why don't you move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Okay, Debbie, second it. All in favor, either say aye or give me the little thumbs up at the bottom of your screen.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We will try to meet again and hopefully we'll get a P E C meeting, um, very shortly. And I will send you information, um, about that. Thanks for being, jumping back on, everybody, I appreciate it.
Guys, be safe.
Thank you, yes. Everybody be safe, please. Thank you. You guys, I miss all of you.
Amen, bless you guys.
Bye, guys.